Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the Pearl City Neighborhood Board Meeting to order. It's April 22nd, Tuesday, and we are at Moulton County Community Center. And I'd like to welcome everyone that have shown up tonight on this nice evening. I hope everyone had a very nice Easter with your family and friends. So moving on, we're going to start off with everyone, if we, everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We've got Scott Ogusawara, leading Cub Scout PAC 75 for our Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, and Scott, if you'd like to come up to the microphone there and, and I'll give you an opportunity to give an announcement here on Cub Scout PAC 75 activities and your needs. Everybody could please sit down.
Thank you, Larry Verre. I just wanted to kind of introduce or reintroduce PAC 75. We've been around for quite a long time. Behind me, I have some of my Cub Scouts, two of them just joined, Ezekiel, can you? And Addison. So they just joined us within, I think, last month or two months ago. And we're just finishing up our fundraising events. We were sending camp cards. I think we have about 200 left if anybody wants to buy. But that money helps fund our activities such as camping. We go indoor rock climbing and whatever else. We're trying to broaden our activity list. As long as it's fun, educational, and if they can learn something beneficial. Life skills, of course, is the most important. And we want them to be, have good character and grow up to be, you know, leaders at some point. I did want to introduce that two weekends from now on a Saturday, May 3rd, at Pearl Ridge Mall uptown, kind of where the Christmas train comes and has it there every year. We're going to be having our Pine Wood Derby race. So it's a statewide Pine Wood Derby race. It's a good chance to come meet all these scouts. Hopefully, we can continue our recruiting and growing our Cub Scout. This is about half of our pack. We have seven scouts right now, but more the merrier. The last thing, if you are, if parents out there are watching or listening and they are interested in having their kids join us, if you Google PAC 75 Pro City, you're guaranteed to see our email. And please reach out and then we can have a conversation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Scott. And boys, good luck to you with the Pine Wood Derby. And I think that's a good location. And I think for recruiting, it really puts the boys up forward there for other kids to see how much fun you're having. And wish you guys the best. Thanks, Scott. Okay, moving on with the meeting. I have some time limit policies and procedures. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to open the list of participants. They click on the raise hand icon by their name for those virtual. When recognized by the chair, address the comments to the chair. Remarks should not exceed three minutes. Please cancel your raise hand icon after speaking. Presentations must be kept under 10 minutes. The chat box is also used to ask simple questions. And board members are required to keep their video active during board meeting. The board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. Specific issues not noted on the agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. Board actions such as draft resolutions and outgoing letters will be posted for public on Google Drive. Okay, I hope everybody got a chance to sign in. This is our public record, okay? And we'll start off a roll call. Kekuni Aguard. Kekuni couldn't make it tonight. Rodney A Wong. Hey Charmaine, Doran. Our vice chair. Okay, Guy Anoy, our treasurer.
Here.
Okay, Brendan Lee. Lawrence Mizano, he could not make it. Dan Smith. Nathan Taguchi.
Here.
All right, Tony Velasco, our secretary.
Up here.
Okay, Larry Verre, me, and Heidi Weber. Okay, and Hanson. We have Coram. Thank you. All right, first up is Public Safety Reports, Honolulu Fire Department. Thank you.
Good evening, folks. My name is firefighter Mason Slade with the Wai'au Fire Station. Incident statistics for the month of March 2025. Two nuisance fires, which include rubbish fires outside a structure or vehicle. Two activated alarms, no fire included. 153 medical emergencies. Seven motor vehicle collisions. One motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian. And a fire safety tip for the month of April is evacuation planning. Sure you have an emergency preparedness plan in place for situations like environmental emergencies, fires, or natural disasters. Familiarize yourself with at least two escape routes from your home and plan an evacuation plan or path if you must leave your neighborhood due to any emergency. For more info, visit fire.honolulu.gov. Few tips added to that is leave early to avoid getting trapped by fire, smoke, or traffic delays. Set up a predetermined meeting spot like a trusted neighbor or relative's home. A low-risk area, a shelter, or evacuation center. And then last but not least, bring your emergency supply kit with essential items for your family and pets. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And also, I want to personally thank you guys because I was one of your statistics here about three weeks ago when you guys got me to Kaiser when I couldn't breathe. And I appreciate it. Of course, Kaiser saved my life for the fourth time. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the board? Rodney.
I was talking to you folks earlier. We had an accident over there on Wyomon Home Road where the telephone pole was cut in half and power lines were dropped down and it grounded a transformer. So lines were on the ground. What, can you, you know, refresh us over here as what the protocol is for that as far as, I mean, you know, we stay away, you know?
We usually set up isolation zone away from the power lines that are dropped down onto the ground. And we have tools in place to test those lines to make sure they're not alive. So we try to set up isolation zone for any community members to stay away from that area.
Yeah, so just in case, before you guys get there, just stay away. Don't even try to assist the accident victim.
Yes, try to stay as far away as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Any other board members' questions? Seeing none, virtual, community, any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Honolulu Police Department Sergeant Miller.
Hello, good evening. I'm Sergeant Miller with District 3 Honolulu Police Department. We'll start with our reported incidents. So far for the month of February, total calls with service, we had 4,966. For this area, Pro City area alone is 1,394. In March, it was 5,086 and in the area, went to 1478. As far as property crimes go, motor vehicle thefts for February are at nine. And then down to the seven in March. Burglaries, which includes homes and businesses, were at seven in February, down one to six in March. Standard thefts, which include shoplifting and anything outside of those boundaries, were at 17 February and then up to 26 in March. And then vehicle burglaries, we're level in February and March at five each. And then our safety tip for the month is just being mindful about road responsibilities and pedestrians and how we should all share the road and take our part in responsibility for safety.
All right, Sergeant Miller, thank you. Board members, any questions for HPD? Virtual, any questions? Community and Sergeant Miller, could you please remain on virtual through the public concerns? I think there might be something related for HPD. Thank you.
Will do, will do.
Okay, moving on to a public testimony. Anybody have anything to bring up? You have about three minutes. Okay, please.
Aloha, my name is Steve. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to share these things that burden my heart this evening. I have personally resided in Pearl City area for 30 years. My wife was born and raised in this area and went, graduated Pearl City High School. My kids graduated Pearl City High. And so I say all that because I want you to know, I love living in Pearl City. I'm from the Far Eastern exotic land called New Jersey, so this is paradise for me. We have lived in our current home on that street right over there for 24 years. We've never had any problems all these years up until about the past year or so. The street above us, O'Nipho Street.
Again, say the, say the street name again.
O'Nipho.
O'Nipho, okay.
Yeah, O'Nipho. The house above us, apparently someone bought the home, I think, about a year and a half ago. And I heard allegedly they use this home as some sort of transition house for the homeless. I say allegedly because I'm simply told that by my neighbors. I've never, I really don't know for sure. I haven't been able to find or locate the owner. And I've observed that there's been a constant revolving door of folks who live there and seem mostly confined to the property during the day. They make gestures like they can't leave. Some of the residents appear to have struggles with psychological disorders as I've observed them walking in very tight circles, talking to themselves, and even striking themselves. Now, you should know, I make that observation because both my wife and I are mental, work in the mental health field. We're both marriage and family therapists. And my wife used to work at a psych hospital. I used to work with the homeless down at Blaisdell Park for a couple of years. But over the past year, there've been a few incidences that really have concerned us, especially now as people in our mid-60s. I've heard vicious and violent threats shouted by some of the residents in that home. For example, and please forgive me, ladies in particular, for the verbiage. I won't say the words, but you'll know what I mean. I will blanking kill you, you B-word. I have personally seen the police visit the home several times. In addition, over the past year, I've had two large beer cans, one of those real big ones, and one large 44-ounce beer bottle thrown into my yard, as well as batteries and some food, which we found our dog eating one morning. My concern is, what if my wife was in the yard at night and that bottle or battery struck her? Or if it hit my dog? What is my dog eating? I would normally try to speak face-to-face to the owner, but I have no idea how to contact him. Even the houses, when I look it up on Google Maps, it's blurred, all blurred out. So in light of all of that, my questions are as follows. Are you folks aware of any transition home on O'Nipho Street? Is the police officer still, I know he's still there, aware? I know you were aware of this home because you've been called by me and other people. Is this indeed some sort of transition home for the homeless? And if so, how does such a permit get obtained? How does it get revoked? How are the residents screened who live there? Because there's some very obvious and serious mental health concerns and fits of rage going on. And the lack of boundaries, the potential harm to the rest of us is no small thing for my wife and I. Will my wife be okay when I'm not around? I don't know. I've never had to worry about that in 24 years. You know, when is my yard stop being in a garbage can for other people? So what is my recourse? You know, is it just keep calling the police again and again and again? Because they've been there more than a few times. Situation never changes. Would the residents of that home retaliate if they knew I'm making this complaint, you know? Again, what does it take to have a permit revoked? What happens to the value of our homes? I'm going to hopefully retire one of these days. What's the resale value all of a sudden when we have this going on? Okay, so these are my concerns this evening. And I hope you can understand that doing nothing is not an option. So thank you for this time. I welcome feedback and possibly how you might be able to help us out.
Steve, thanks for bringing that to our attention. I've been on the board for the last 19 years. I don't know about any, anybody coming to the board on that particular unit. We have had other city initiatives that have happened. We had same-like concerns. We went into mediation with the owners of those operations and we usually got, we got a good solution down the road. Thanks for bringing our attention. We will, we'll start working it. The nice thing is council member Okimoto is here tonight. She heard you and we'll, we'll talk later. And did you have a, could you come up to the microphone?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, well, Officer, Officer Miller heard you just now, so.
So you walked over and went?
You have to, yep, ma'am, you have to use the mic because the virtual land, they can't hear you. And we're getting the text messages right now.
Okay, so I live two houses away from that house. And in the last year or so, there have been about four times that the police have come up, come to the home. And I asked them, I walked to them and I said, do I have to be concerned about this? Because that's never happened before. And they told me, no, ma'am. If they call, we have to address the problem. So they come. And of course, I was sort of assured when they said that, but not really. Because yes, there is a gentleman that goes round and round in the yard. I haven't heard them yelling or anything, but they have come. The police have come and they are close to my house. And I, well, I've been thinking now I have to put up fencing in my yard, you know, and protect myself. And so that is a problem. I'm glad you brought that up, sir.
Okay, so Steve, make sure that we get your contact information before you walk out. Put on a piece of paper, whatever, hand it to one of our board members. But I do have our vice chair, Charmaine, you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. I just, yeah, could you make sure that you get the address? But I wanted to find out if up until today, have you filed a complaint with the Department of Health?
No, I haven't.
Who's actually the, okay, so they're actually the licensing.
I have no idea how to do this.
Okay, yeah, so that's why, we've actually had a couple of these. And like, like I already said, most of these have had, once Department of Health has been alerted, we've actually managed to help the people in the community as well as the home. But we have really good representatives who are often in the audience. And these are state issues. So Chair Verre, if they are present, Representative Tapayama, Senator Alefante, can you please connect them to make sure that a representative can help them, connect them with DOH? They actually do have a database. And if I had the address, we could find out. There's only a few instances where it's confidential, like domestic violence shelters and so forth. But most of these are really easy to track down.
I don't know the protocol to expose things, not being on the microphone. Okay, I'll write it down for you, sure.
Any other, any other questions for Steve? Board members? Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. And Officer Miller, you got that too, right? No acknowledgement. Okay, he's there. He's there.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have computer problems. Just to touch up on that subject. These homes are, there's various types. There's some mental illness homes, there's halfway houses, there's homeless transition homes. I do not know what kind of house it is, but if you're telling me it's blurred, there's some kind of confidentiality involved in that. So it's more than likely a medical facility of some, some type. Like someone mentioned earlier that, that some of that zoning stuff is outside of our realm. That's something we don't enforce and it is a state issue. And to be honest with you, we only can have, we only can handle incidents as they occur. There's not a lot of preemptive stuff that we can do on our end. But I did take down the info, we passed it on to my command and see what we have. These are getting more and more poppin' all over. There's at least seven in Pro City, including this one. So, and that's the ones that I know of. They're not all, they're not terrible places, to be honest with you. They are concerning because of the, because of the out-of-ordinary behavior of some of the residents. But so far, we haven't had anything of great concern with any of them. But then again, we are reactionary to that, to that type of home.
Thank you, Sergeant. Any other comments, board members? Rodney, did you have something that you want to say? Okay, all right, all right. We'll be in contact with you. Okay, any other public concerns? Senator, did you want to bring up something? Okay. All right, we're gonna, the next item on the agenda is board business. I'm going to defer our recognition. We have one more meeting for our term. We have a two-year term. And I was going to recognize some of the board members of the three that are departing. Two are not here tonight. And Brendan is at, Brendan's got a good record attending meetings. He's going to be here next month, so we'll, we'll do it then. Moving on to a board resolution. Vice Chair, could you read the resolution that we have?
The resolution on the agenda is urging the city and county of Honolulu Parks and Recreation to approve constructing a dog park at Blaisdell Park in Pearl City. It says that last year, the city and county of Honolulu added money to the budget to construct a park. And whereas based on further investigation by neighborhood board members, many residents of Aia, Pearl City, Waipahu are currently using the Blaisdell Park for social gatherings with their dogs. And many of the park users have requested a dog park be built on the Maoka Diamond Head side of the park. And the B, if we further resolve it, the Pro City Neighborhood Board requests the city and county of Honolulu, Director of Parks and Recreation, approve the construction of a dog park at the Neil Blaisdell Park in Pearl City. Move to approve?
Hey, do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Go ahead. Thank you, Heidi. Here you go.
I went ahead and looked up the Blaisdell Park and it's actually listed as an on-leash dog park. So I think we need to amend this resolution to state that we're asking for a fenced area for an off-leash dog park.
Next week, we'll have a meeting with Parks and Rec. We'll discuss this. But what I'm looking at and what I have observed upfront, the people that are using the dog park right now, they're using it also for dog shows. It's a perfect location, the parking, they're away from the homeless that are on the trail. And they personally asked me, this would be a great place. And the good news is, for the last six months, I've been trying to find a champion to lead this project. And I haven't got anybody until a few weeks ago. And that person has good leadership skills as a business. And I know that she would come through to, to help us once we got approval from, from the board, Parks and Rec, our council member, to move forward with it. And I truly believe this could be a success story to build. Because if you're building it from scratch, you have an opportunity to set yourself up for success. Not only for Pearl City, but our sister townships of Aia, Waipahu, we think of them too. And Milani, as they can come down to. So anyway, any other discussion? Hey, seeing none?
Hold on.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Brendan?
Hold on, yeah.
I believe there is a motion to amend.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna amend it to, let's see, that Pearl City Neighborhood requests the city and county of Honolulu, Director of Parks and Recreation, approve the construction of a dog park. But what do I need to amend?
Okay, hold on. So there is a motion to amend, to, so I, to add a fenced dog park. But I actually had a comment on that. And then, is that, is that okay?
Yes.
So Heidi, did you, so are you making that motion to amend? And then I second the motion, so now it's open for discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Vice Chair. Vice Chair, we lost you. Vice Chair, we can't hear you. Can you just text her? Let her know that, no audio. Hold on for just a second. The amendment's going to be one. Off-leash park. Okay, so, so can I get? Okay, so we, we have a second motion to amend the narrative to the Pearl City Neighborhood Board stated for an off-leash park to be constructed in Pearl City at Blaisdell Park. Okay? Okay? Off-leash fenced. Does everybody agree with that? Okay. Okay, can I call, give a call for the vote on that? Okay, can I call for the vote? And I'll let you go ahead and call them off.
When I call your name, please say yes, no, or abstain from this motion regarding the amendments. Kekuni Aguard? Rodney A Wong? Hi, okay. Charmaine? Guy Anoy?
Yes.
Okay. Brendan Lee? Heidi Weber? Yes. Daniel Smith? Nathan Takeuchi?
Yes.
Okay. Tony Velasco?
Yes.
Okay. And Larry Verre?
Yes.
Charmaine?
It's like she's offline.
Oh, she's offline. Okay, then it's adopted.
Okay. Okay, I accidentally missed up what? I missed the, on my agenda here, the presentation that was supposed to be ahead of the board business.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, we just voted on the amendment. We still need to vote on the resolution itself.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, so let's go ahead and do another.
Okay, when I call your name, please say yes or abstain to adopt the resolution with amendments. Rodney A Wong? Yes. Guy Anoy? Guy?
Yes.
Brendan Lee? Heidi Weber? Okay, Daniel Smith? Nathan Takeuchi?
Yes.
Yep, Tony Velasco?
Yes.
And Larry Verre?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is adopted.
Okay, we're going to go back to item number four. I apologize for missing that. Department of Transportation Services Bus Rail Integration Project. We have Mr. Dave Simpson. Dave, are you online?
Aloha, my name is Teresa. I'm actually going to take Dave's place for the presentation this evening.
Okay, Ms. Teresa Dean.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
Thank you, thanks so much. Aloha and thanks for having me this evening.
You have 10 minutes.
Give the presentation today. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Okay, please let me know if you folks can't see it.
We see it.
Okay, great. So my name's Teresa. I'm a planner at PBR Hawaii. And I'm going to give a brief presentation on the proposed bus service changes for the opening of the second phase of Skyline. I'm joined by Jay Agusa from the Department of Transportation Services. He's here to receive comments and answer any questions or clarify anything that comes up after this brief presentation. So as you may have heard, the next phase of Skyline will be opening this fall. It will connect more people to employment centers. And so now's really the time to consider how to make the bus and rail networks the most efficient for our riders. So we'll be presenting some proposed changes and are looking forward to your feedback. So this slide and the following slide shows the Skyline stations that have opened with Phase 1 and the next series of openings, Phase 2 in October. The first phase opened. The stations that terminate at Aloha Stadium. And now the second phase opening in October will terminate at Middle Street. Skyline hours will also be expanded with. Skyline hours will also be expanded with earlier starts and stops each day. And so again, the buses making changes to their routes to accommodate the rail extension, adjusting bus hours and ridership frequency in order to improve services and improve efficiencies. So first, I'd like to go over some of the routes that were adjusted with the first phase opening of Skyline that happened earlier this year. This slide shows the routes that were changed in March with the first opening, Route 44, 461, and 415, shown in pink, green, and blue lines respectively, were restructured to provide service to Skyline. A new route, number 47, which is shown in dark purple, was added to get riders from Eva Beach to the UH West Oahu Station. So now I'll talk about the routes that are proposed for changes with this next opening phase in October. So this is a diagrammatic image that shows how bus and Skyline can integrate together to make a more seamless network. A big picture, the A-line will shorten because it's redundant with the new Skyline station openings. And new routes to Waikiki and UH Manoa are proposed to be added. This next series of slides are before and after style. So you can see here, this slide shows the current A-line. You can see that it extends all the way west to Pearl Ridge Rail Station. With the proposed changes, the A-line, which is now shown in green, will terminate at Lagoon Drive, connecting to the Skyline stations shown in blue. The hours of service are expanding to run later into the evening and there's no change to the frequency of service. This slide and the following one shows a new W-line is proposed to replace the current Route 20. Route 20, which is shown in the green dotted line here in this image, runs from the Halava Station at Aloha Stadium into Waikiki. DTS is proposing the W-line, now shown in the darker blue, which will start at the airport and end in Waikiki. You can see in the written text that the hours of service are expanding to add earlier mornings, but will still be running late into the evening to serve people who work in Waikiki. There will also be greater frequency of service, giving riders more flexibility in planning their commutes. Here you can see a bit more detail on the W-line as it is proposed. It will make a slightly different loop near the airport and then follow Nemets Highway to downtown Honolulu rather than passing through the downtown core. This slide shows the new proposed U-line route, shown in dark green, that would run from Mapuna Puna to UH Manoa on weekdays. The next two slides show how Route 303, which serves Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam, will be discontinued in favor of a new Route 331. You can see that the existing Route 303, which is shown in the orange hash line, has redundancy with Skyline. So once it's opened, the new 331 is proposed to connect to Skyline at the Makalapa Station, improving runtimes. So you can see it cuts some of that redundancy out of the route. This slide shows changes to Routes 40, 42, and 51 that are proposed to connect to Skyline at the Lagoon and Pearl Highland Stations. The Wahihua Route 51, in green, will be adjusted so that it connects to the Pearl Highland Station. Routes 40 and 42 will be slightly adjusted to connect to the Skyline at the Lagoon Station. So you can see those excerpts out of the larger map show the deviations that would be made in the routes. And this is the final route change proposed for the October 1st opening. Route 46, that runs between Kapale and UH West Oahu, DTS is proposing a service frequency reduction from every 10 minutes to every 15 minutes. So I'd like to share some future changes to bus routes that DTS is contemplating ahead of any of the other future Skyline phase openings. Again, this is a graphic overview of the concept where the bus routes feed into Skyline for a more efficient ride. And you can see some of the proposed or considered route changes would be Line C, that now runs from Makaha to town. It would run to the UH West Oahu Station and riders could get out of traffic and onto Skyline for the rest of their commute. As another example, E-line would be adjusted from running into town to Wahihua from Eva Beach. This would provide Malcolm Mackay service, improve route frequency, and connect to Skyline. So again, DTS would like to hear from all of you folks, riders in particular, on these proposed changes. You can email comments or questions to thebusstop@honolulu.gov. They're asking that you submit your comments no later than July 15th on these proposals. We also encourage you to check out their website at www.honolulu.gov/dts. There you can watch videos on how to ride the Skyline and get more information on bus and rail station transfers and fair information. So I think that that is my 10 minutes, so I appreciate your time and thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dean, very, very good update on what's happening with the rail. I know that once this opens up in October, we're gonna see a dramatic spike of the number of riders, especially for the shipyard and to the airport. Those would be the big, big things. Board members, any questions for this presentation? Rodney, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, thanks. So, um, how many express buses will you folks be running out of the Lagoon Station?
That is a good question. We have DTS with us, I don't know if you're prepared to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'm happy to write down your folks' thoughts.
I can, I can answer.
Okay.
So, yeah, hi, this is Jay Agusa, I'm with DTS. We will be running, see, you asked about the Lagoon Station, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so Lagoon Station will be Routes A, Routes W, and U-line. So the, those are the three limited stop routes. And then the route, there's gonna be three routes that are providing local service, that's Routes 40, 42, and 51 at Lagoon Station.
Okay, also too, um, on this express route from the Lagoon Station, will you also be contemplating a run down King Street, past the major private schools such as Maranal, Punahol, HBA, and ending up at Mid-Pacific and possibly St. Louis? Because along that King Street route, yeah. They got a lot of private schools up there that could benefit from a route over there, a direct route with minimal stops.
Route A will serve King Street and Kapialani Boulevard, and it will end up at UH Manoa.
That's great, that's good. Okay, so the next question is, are you folks with the Wahihua Line coming down to go to the Pearl Station? Are you guys gonna open up that roundabout off of the, the H2? Where you come down Farrington Highway and then take the turnoff going up H2 and take that, that roundabout that was built about three, four years ago?
Yes, we are working with the Hawaii Department of Transportation to have that open and accessible for our buses to be able to serve Waipaha Station. But just to be clear, this E-line, this is not happening in October. This is sometime in the future. Yeah, but anyways, that, that U-turn or the, the roundabout, that's gonna be required for our Route 51 to serve Waipaha Station. So regardless, that roundabout will be needed from H dot for us to use it.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, Dan Smith, yeah, whether it's roundabout or, or a kind of a bus cutout to make a, you know, short circuit, the, the U-turn is definitely something that is needed and can be, I think it can be relatively, relatively low cost. So, and it really would improve the service, you know, express bus from Mililani, for example, to the area down and connect onto the, onto the, onto the rail. And, and while not directly related, we do need improved coordination between the bus system and the DOE busing to fill in the gaps. And particularly related to, in this case, to Pearl City High School. So we'll continue to ask, ask for improved service and, and coordination, timing, and so forth. Thank you.
Board members, any other questions?
Thank you for your comments.
I just had a quick question on the email address. Is that somewhere, I, this past weekend, my family took a little bike ride and ended from Pearl City, we ended up down at Kamakana Alii, but got caught in the rain. So we attempted to take the rail back to Pearl City and was not able to buy children's passes for the rail. Is that something I can address with that, thebusstop@honolulu.gov? Or is there another place to send that comment?
Are you looking to purchase youth passes, like a youth holo card?
Right, so we weren't intending to take the, the rail that day, but it started to rain. And so when we attempted to buy the holo holo cards, we were told that in order to do that, the only place is a satellite city hall. And you have to go with like documentation to prove ages of the children and everything. Which, I mean, it was, it was fine, we paid the extra for the adult passes just so we could get home, but something to think about. I don't know why it's so difficult to get a child's pass.
Yeah, so on the bus website, thebus.org, I mean, going in person is an option, but you can also submit, I guess, an application for a youth holo card. There's a printable form that you can send in.
Right.
So it's thebus.org.
Okay, so you have to plan ahead if you're gonna use the child pass. There's no possibility of spur of the moment being able to purchase an adult holo holo card and a child holo holo card at the same location, spur of the moment, to get you home from wherever you may be.
Unfortunately, at this time, only adult holo cards are available to purchase at the Skyline stations. The youth holo cards are, are not, yeah. They're available online or at the satellite city halls.
All right, thank you.
Could I, could I?
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, let me second Heidi's request here. You could quite easily have a station attendant come down and look at, look at the kid and say, yeah, it looks like he might be, he or she might be under 18. Well, but, well, but this is the kind of thing where government bureaucracy is just not solving the problem, and they should solve the problem. These are the kinds of problems that we have with, with government agencies. Sometimes common sense can say, there's an obvious solution. And I just proposed one, is that A, you enable the, in the vending machines to buy a, a youth one. And since they have attendance there, they can come down and if necessary, look at the kid and say, looks like he or she is under 18. And, and, and it wouldn't, wouldn't even take very long. And if occasionally there's some fraud, and a 19-year-old buys a youth thing, overall, it's not a big, it's not a big deal. I'm sorry to get excited about this, but the, the government agencies need, need to adopt creative, simple solutions. Thank you.
Okay, Dan and Heidi, will we revisit this? And if we, if we need to, we can state a requirement, we can put a resolution forward. Okay, virtual, anybody?
And just, just to, just to let you know, I have the comment noted and I'll take it back to my office, I'll let the, the folks in charge of the holo program, I'll inform them about this request and hopefully they can work, work something out and figure out a simpler solution.
Yeah, we have an online individual, we don't have a name. Oh, Donald Sakamoto, what do you got?
Yes, Chair, thank you, Donald Sakamoto, I'm the President for Citizens for Fair AD, right? We deal with passengers with kapuna disabled that ride the service like Skyline bus in handy. My question to the department is regarding the holo card, when are you gonna make a payment plan on your phone? So you can have a wallet and scan your, your phone to go on the Skyline? And what options are going to be made to make buses accessible for luggage? So when we, those who of us go take the bus to the rail station, they go to the airport, where are you gonna put the luggage? Are there gonna be luggage racks on the bus also modification? Thank you.
Okay, so your first question regarding being able to use a holo card on your, or from your phone, I know that is in the works, I, I don't, I don't have dates on that. I don't really work with the holo card or holo program. But all, all I know right now is that is coming, it is in the works. And about the luggage on buses, we have ordered, I'm not exactly sure how many buses, but we are ordering buses that they don't have luggage racks, but they have more space to hold luggage on the ground. It's just the, the seating is configured differently so that riders can have their luggage by them. And it, it's made for luggage. But all of our older buses, they, they don't have that. But we're, we're trying to, I guess, the buses that we're ordering now, we're trying to think ahead and provide some extra space for luggage.
I look forward to seeing, or experiencing that bus later, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, any other questions from a virtual group? Community, any questions? You got one more, Rodney? Okay, we're good. All right, well, thank you very much for the update on the rail. We're gonna be moving on. Board members, I'm gonna go back to Board Business, item C. I just wanted to, this is a discussion item. I just want to let everybody know that, you know, our legislative priorities that we put together for this last year, we had a number of requirements, things that we're working that'll definitely help and, and improve the quality of life, not only for Pearl City, but our adjacent townships, with them participating in our parks. I got a meeting set up next week, Wednesday, it'll be virtual. I'll be giving a presentation to the Deputy Department of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Edward Aiden. The first item we're gonna talk about is, is our Vice Chair did a spearheaded efforts to get volunteers for almost all the parks in Pearl City. So we have Adopt a Park Program, we're also recognizing them. We'll again, recognize them again next to board meeting. Also, we're looking at the, the resolution that we just passed. So we had, let them know that we, we've got strong support for setting up a, a dog fencing area for Neil Blaisdell Park, developing youth ball fields possibly on the Pearl City Peninsula, developing a public water recreation area possibly off Neil Blaisdell area. And also, there's a need for more lifeguards in Pearl City. Our kapuna definitely use our pools during the day and they need to make sure those hours are filled with lifeguards during those advertised hours. And the other thing, there's, there's also a huge need to certify all our youth. Everybody in our elementary schools should be certified in swimming qualifications. And lastly, I was gonna give them an update, a repair. We're almost complete with the Japanese peace bell shrine in Blaisdell Park. As you know, the termites have really ate the, ate the shrine. And we repaired all that work. And other than that, that's what I, any questions on anything I got? And you're all, I'm gonna put a notice out, you're guys are, you're welcome to join in and listen in. The Vice Chair and I'll be primary speakers on this. Any questions? Okay. Seeing none, we're gonna move on. Government reports. Mr. Gene Hibano, Director of Chief Engineer and Council Member Val Kimoto. You notice I bumped you up to the top of the list? And we, and we put And, and we put you intentionally together because all our questions seem to be city-related all the time. And instead of Councilmember Okimoto, you waiting till the end? Because this was the way to do it. We're, we're trying to justice things. It's all fair to everybody. But, but if you take a look at it, most of our questions are you guys.
Yes.
Okay. And, and our vice chair, she's back on again. Charmaine, are you there? Okay, great. She's back on. He's got a lot of questions for you, too.
I'm sure she does.
Thank you.
Good evening, Gina Bono, director of the Department of Facility Maintenance, City and County of Honolulu. Good evening, Vice Chair Duran, online chair and members. My report this month will start with the mayor's newsletter and updates. Mayor Blangardi's town hall has started across Oahu with it being the third year in a row. This Thursday will be the third town hall at Mililani High School. And in the future, on May 22nd, Radford High School will also be hosting the town hall in which this is the town hall for this community. Blaisdell Concert Hall reopens after back of house renovations. The Department of Parks and Recreation begins air staff for the city's summer fund program. City commemorates Hokulea 50th anniversary at Ko'oloa Regional Park. Honolulu Charter Commission members are sworn in for the decennial review of the city charter and a briefing of how residents can now download the new app for Honolulu Alert, which is the news, new alert system for natural disasters and emergency situations. All of this can be found online at www.honolulu.gov/newsletter. All right. So following up on questions from last month, there is an outstanding item from Member Smith regarding the report. I've yet to receive a response from DTS, so that will be tabled for next month. Vice Chair Duran had a concern with a caution light near Komo Mai Drive, hairpin turn being blocked by tree. DTS will investigate and have tree trimmed if it is blocking the flasher. Vice Chair Duran also raised concern that water streaming over the road on Komo Mai Drive, one located near the hairpin turn next to the guardrail and below Palisades Entrance Park. DFM will be visiting the site tomorrow to see if there is some damages to a water line and will fix anything that needs to be fixed if there is standing water. There was a question from resident Wong raising concerns of cars with expired safety stickers illegally parked on the corner of 1393 Koahaka Street, near the intersection of Ko'oli'i Circle. HPD responded by saying a team was there to check. They cited and told two vehicles for expired registration. Officers will continue to monitor the area and take the appropriate enforcement action when violations are observed. So with that, I will entertain any questions. So this is the fun part.
Okay, board members. All right, new questions. Heidi, go ahead.
I was just wondering if there was an update on the lane striping on Upper Waimano Home Road between Komo Mai and the high school to delineate between the footpath where the students are walking and the roadway.
I believe that was done. No?
So there is some striping that goes from Komo Mai to Ma'ija Circle, but from Komo Mai to the high school, particularly on the uphill side of the road, that, that's the side where the footpath continues, at least as far as Ko'oekeke, I think is the road right below Mōmilani School.
We will continue to check.
Thank you.
If I recall from last month, we did have a work order already issued for it. So let me get an update whether or not they got to it. But I, I recall doing some kind of painting recently in the area, but maybe it's not that footpath.
Hey, Dan?
Yes, to, to continue our discussion on Komo Mai and Waimano Home Road intersection and the, the lighting. Okay. And I, I understand the objection or declin, declining to do a left turn lane, but the, the answer, the, the simple answer again, I believe, is as, as we have at Waimano Home Road and Moanalua Road where when it's your, when it's your turn, your, your, your directions, time, it's all open, right? And so you can go straight ahead, you can go left, you can go right. You, you alter, you alternate that way. I would, I don't know, there must be a term for, there must be a term for that, but say coming out of, out of Palisades eastbound, it is a dangerous situation now because of the, the, the slope on the other side, you, you can't see the, the incoming traffic. Whereas if you, if you just say, okay, eastbound, you know, you can, you can go straight, you can go left, you can go, you right, and then you alternate. So when it's your, your direction and streets time, it's all open. You don't have to contend about, you don't have to worry about, you know, somebody coming through and so forth. And as I said, it's implemented down here at, at Waimano Home Road and Moanalua. Road there. So I, I, I think I'd like to say, give us, give us your opinion about that. And it's also, I think in terms of programming the lights, that's pretty easy, a pretty easy fix.
Just looking back at the response back in January. So the study indicated that there were minimum volumes to warrant a protected left turn, which is the reason why they have not adjusted the signaling. And that's the reason why you wanted the report.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, can we, can we hold just for a second, Director?
Yes.
Uh, Leyden is online and he has a, he has a comment.
Perfect. There.
Welcome.
Uh, good morning, Chair. This is the board. Community, community. Thanks. Thank you, Director. Um, so the first question about the striping up by Waimano Home Road, going to the high school. Yeah, we just issued a work order to DFM to have it restriped. Yeah, we, we went a week or two ago to take a look. Regarding the turn phase at Waimano Home Road and Komo Mai Drive, yes, that is correct. The minimum volumes to, I guess, justify the installation of a left turn phase was not met. However, we are looking to see if we can extend the grid for that east-west movement. So more traffic coming out of Palisades and get through intersection. But you just gotta be aware that there is a finite amount of time that traffic signal phase has. So if you take time and you give it on the east-west direction, the Ma'oka Makai direction on Waimano Home Road will be lessened. Um, the other thing that we're looking at is possibly changing the lanes for westbound Komo Mai Drive traffic at Waimano Home Road. So we would make the centermost lane a left turn only and the right turn lane a straight and right. What this does, it'll increase where, um, yes, the driver coming, heading eastbound would know that they just have to look out for the traffic in the right, as, as opposed to now, you got both the left and lanes. You're not sure if they're gonna go straight left or straight right. So they still, um, increase, yeah, the driver's, I guess, awareness. And then I went out this morning to take a look. The westbound on Komo Mai Drive does not back up too much. It pretty much clears out in one cycle. So this may help out that section. And the, the, I guess, the phasing that you're about, where you, it's called split phasing, where each air traffic has its own time. The only thing is that if you do that, everybody else, all the other movements will, will have less time to do their movement. So those, we would have to study further if we're gonna, um, look at that. It'll be similar to what's at, um, let's see, that uh, Commemora Highway at, what, Commemora Highway at Waimano Home Road is split phased. And those are like the longer traffic signal cycles. You'll wait maybe four to five minutes just to get your turn again. That's the only downside to split phasing the intersection.
Leyden, thank you.
I know that was kind of a lot.
Appreciate you, you and the director, you know, listening to, listening to our board members because they live this, they feel it, they taste it every day. And we appreciate it. Granted, you have, you know, you have your studies that you do, your statistics, but we appreciate you at least taking the risk, listen to our board members and just try it. If it doesn't work, you get a whole bunch of complaints. We go back. How, how hard is it to switch it around? But anyway, we thank you, Director. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll do some research and understand the split phasing. Maybe that's what I'm doing. It's, and it's not at Camp Highway. It's at Moanalua Road and, and Waimano Home Road where it's, when it's your turn, it's wide, you know, it's wide open. And you could try it. It would be easy to program. I mean, I, I was there recently and, and, you know, it took me three, three, three cycles to, to get, uh, e, uh, eastbound on Komo Mai, left turn up to, uh, to Pearl City High School. And the timing about a minute and, kind of a minute and a half in each direction is what we have down here. And it seems to, seems to work, work pretty, pretty well. So I, I would encourage, yes, uh, trying it out because it's pretty simple. It's a pretty simple program.
Leyden, I'm presuming you're listening to this.
Okay, we gotta move on. We got Vice Chair been waiting, too.
Yes.
Vice Chair, are we after Leyden?
Yes, I can hear.
Thank you, Leyden, again for being on the call today.
Oh, thank you.
Vice Chair.
Thank you so much for coming out and, you know, the attend. Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you good.
Can you?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for coming out and giving us your personal attention. We really appreciate that. And just let us know as you continue to look at our stoplight. You know, many people in Palisades who've been here a long time and maybe Board Member Lee or his family might know have shared via messages and email that there were some plans early on to change that intersection, which with maybe more signalization. I mean, I think even somebody came to this meeting and said 50 years ago, there were plans to change that light. But I, but we can find out. I can ask the director to help us find out whether that has changed over time. Do we have a traffic lights and intersection lights that change timing based on time of day or traffic flow?
Oh, yes, there is. Our, our traffic signals division can, can do that. So sometimes like in the AM or PMP, extend the green times for.
Do you know if, I don't know if you know from the top of your mind, but do you know if that intersection is one of them?
If it can be done? Is that your question?
Yeah, or if it is, or if it is changing now. It is.
The timing changes for, um, just before school starts on weekdays and at school ends on week, um, on weekdays. I've been at that intersection during those times and...
So it's quicker in the morning?
It's longer. So before, before school starts in the morning, when there's the rush hour traffic of kids going to school, the traffic signals at the intersection of Komo Mai and Waimano Home are longer to allow more traffic to flow through. During the middle of the day, the, the, um, it cycles off of a pressure. So the signals normally stand on Komo Mai as the main thoroughfare and as cars come to cross across Waimano Home and it triggers the pressure plate, the light signal changes.
And every other time, it's much quicker? When no more school, probably.
It's not that it's quicker. It operates off a pressure. It's not necessarily off of a timer. It's off of a pressure plate. So if there's no cars coming in and out of the intersection, the, the intersection falls to Komo Mai as green. And then if a car comes to, to make a left-hand turn onto Waimano Home, the southbound Komo Mai turns red and the left-hand light turns green. So it doesn't necessarily cycle all the way through to get to that green. It's whatever the cars that are coming. And if cars come into all four intersections at the same time, then it'll cycle. It'll do its normal cycle. Komo Mai northbound, Komo Mai, I mean, Waimano Home northbound, Waimano Home left, so on and so forth. But otherwise, it remains as Waimano, oh, sorry, Stan Kirk, as Waimano Home as the green. And as cars come into the intersection, if they're only individually, then it triggers those specific lights to allow that cars to pass.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think based on what board members share, yeah, I think that might be a good idea, trying to see if some of the other bound traffic, adjusting some of that could help in the morning. So thank you, Leyden, for looking at that. We really appreciate it.
Heidi, Heidi?
I just wanted to make one more comment about the Waimano Home-Komo Mai intersection and the studies that you did there. I do know that there are a lot of people who have changed the way that they drive so that they are making, coming off of Komo Mai out of Palisades, they're making the right to turn down Waimano Home Road to then turn left on one of the lower streets to come back around to meet up or cross Komo Mai at a different intersection in order to make either right-hand turns or go straight through where there's less traffic. And so I think that should be taken into account with some of the traffic studies that are being done, is that you need to look at the other streets in the area to see kind of the path of where those cars are going because a lot of them are still going to the high school, but they're taking a more convoluted route to do so because it's nearly impossible to make that left out of Palisades going uphill towards the high school. Thank you.
To board members' point, when I have to take my niece to Mōmilani Elementary out of Palisades, that's how I do it. I don't turn left on Waimano Home or go straight. It, it's too, I turn right on Waimano Home. I take the first left into Mōmilani and go straight up. And it's, there's nobody waiting over there for me to make the left-hand turn off of Waimano Home. It's easy to cross Komo Mai once you're in Mōmilani. I just avoid that intersection. I avoid going straight or left at Komo Mai and Waimano Home during school start and end hours because it's just crazy.
You're your own Google for the fastest way up.
Well, after, I'm 56, so after driving for the last 40, what, 45 years in Palisades, you learn a thing or two.
Okay, we beat this horse to death.
Well, again, we, we appreciate the passion. I, I, we understand. And I would, I wanna again thank Leyden to be on today because that is a topic that is always... uh that is a topic that is always talked about every month. So thank you.
Yeah, so Rodney, if you got something new.
We're gonna move down the road.
Okay, you got something new?
Yeah. So, Mr. G, we have had a few accidents uh right where Colette and I live. Um, it's right past Our Lady of Good Counsel. So if anyone is familiar with that section of Wa Manohom Road, as you're coming up Wa Manohom Road past Our Lady of Good Counsel, Wa Manohom veers to the left. Apparently, four drivers did not veer. So they ended up hitting the same pole, same tree. And recently, we had a uh young lady um hit the tree, uh cut the pole in half, uh send a piece of the pole into the next, the neighbor's yard. And they were blocked for a little while. So the day after I went up the road and there was no sign over there to show that it veered to the left. So I mean, it it may be an improvement to let folks know, especially at night. Um, all these accidents happen late at night. Like my good friend David Kamai said, Lieutenant, nothing good happens after midnight.
Ten o'clock.
And these are after midnight. So um, you know, on another accident, same place where the veer is, young lady didn't see the veer. So she hit the curb and then sent her diagonally across. And she cut down the telephone, uh the uh light pole. So I think maybe a sign would help him up over there showing the veer in the road because we've had container trucks take out the tree. Uh, we had one gentleman nail the pole. He was dizzy as all heck right by my wall. Oh, yeah, we got we got a lot of stuff going on that fair. So if you guys take a look at it, you know, maybe.
We'll work with DTS for sure.
Heard that, Layden?
All right, any any other uh questions? For Director?
Chair.
Yes, go ahead. Okay, hold on, hold on. Jeff, uh Jeff, hold on a second. Guy, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, this this one is for um uh both uh Gene and uh Layden. Uh, you folks mentioned that there's not enough uh uh traffic that warrants the, you know, that that right turn only like that. Um, the case in point is not so much the uh amount of traffic, but you know, um throughout the entire day. But uh it it really poses a a um danger, right? Uh, during the peak times like that. And um so so I think that, you know, considering the dangers, I mean, um when I returned home, you know, after coming from town, like little after eight, I noticed that uh the right turn only and and um people that wanna go straight off of uh Komo Mai. It's it's ridiculous. I I see that line go all the way down to a children's house. And uh you know what's the sad part about is that then what what people are doing is that they're making two lanes from children's house going up. So they're crossing the uh double line like that. So um, you know, don't don't say that, oh, not enough traffic. I mean, what is it gonna take a a major catastrophic hit on to say that, oh, okay, yeah, now we better do the change because now we had a hit on and you know fatalities, et cetera, like that. So I think that's incredibly irresponsible to 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 say that, especially when the traffic goes all the way down to children's house.
Thank you, Guy.
What time of day is that? What time of day in the morning? Oh, yeah. What? Mention a different time of day besides the morning. No, I don't know. I said in the morning. In the morning, okay. In the morning. Yeah, and it's ridiculous. And also too, uh uh what happens is that, you know, I go to meetings up in the uh Pearl City Community Center at least uh uh two or three times a month. And you know, in I think our meeting starts at six o'clock. And for me to make that left turn from Komo Mai onto uh Wa Manohom Road going up, boy, you should see how fast those people coming on Komo Mai. It and and you can't see them because a lot of people are trying to make left turns um going westbound. And uh so now, sometimes, I mean, if there's a lot of cars, I just go straight. I don't even attempt to make the left turn anymore. Because um they're ripping at like, you know, forty plus. And uh it's it's really a a blind section like that. So again, I say uh, don't don't base it on volume, yeah, base it on safety. And then I finally got the letter that you guys are gonna remove the crosswalk, yeah, down by Nanakaya.
Thank you, Guy. Okay, Jeff.
Uh, so I was asked uh last month and the month before by a Board Member, uh Rodney Wong, about the notches on the side of the road, Komo Mai. So I found that it's not state, it's a city and county. I didn't mean to throw you under the bus, but but uh so you might be able to take the question and answer it. So there's notches going up. The state said it might be able to help control speed or rumble strips to slow down, but he didn't really know the answer because it does belong to the uh city and county.
Are are you referring to traffic calming measures that would make noise for you to slow down? Is that what we're talking about? Layden, Layden is on as well.
It's more prevalent on the North Shore. Um, they're like the uh
The ruts.
The ruts, yeah, the rumble strips. Um, it's more prevalent on the North Shore because they got a lot of, you know, dim-lit areas. And people are, you know, it's a long drive out there. People are getting tired. You know, from when you take the Kaniway to Laie Run. Um, so they put the notches or the rumble strips in the middle of the lane and the outside of the lane said if you veer, you know, away from the, close to the edges, it'll wake you up.
Layden, you got a comment on that?
Yeah, generally, we use those in places not close to residential areas because uh they're gonna hear that thing going off all the time. Usually, we try to keep it in isolated areas. But I'm uh. Location was this at?
Well, you could use it on uh, you know, places like the children's house or or you know, on edges. You know, where it'll keep a person in the center of the lane. So you know what I mean? Even though if you put it into a the um the neighborhoods or you don't wanna put it into neighborhoods, the the object is not to, you know, wake up the neighbors. The object is for the driver to stay in the middle of the lane.
Correct.
Layden, could you please look into that and you get back to us?
Yes. Yeah, uh Layden. Yep. You know, in in regards to uh uh the Board Members who just made that comment, um, they also use um those notches uh right on the lines. On the lines, they they use those notches like that. So so you know, like uh, I mean, if you hit the notch, you deserve to be awoken up, so to say. Um, so put reflectors, yeah?
Okay, we gotta get moving on. Charmaine?
I just wanted to um let the Director know, um and the Board Members that have been working on uh Komo Mai Palisades issues. DFM did reach out to me today about the water on the road and the tree, and so I'm going to send them pictures and contact them um tomorrow. So thank you for your help with that, Gene.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Unity? Seeing none? Okay.
Thank you.
Story goes on.
No, no, no. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hey, don't go anywhere. We got Councilmember Okamoto coming up. All right, Val, you're up. Welcome. And Councilmember Okamoto, thanks for coming in person today.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Chair Verre, Vice Chair Duran, and members of the Board here in person and on Zoom as well as members in the community. Councilmember Val Akino Okimoto here from District Eight. Happy to be here in person. I do have a little legislative report. You have my written report before you, but I know that when this is written, it's the beginning of the month and usually our reports are given towards the end. So some of the things in there may have um changed. I'm gonna give you kind of a quick legislative update. We had a couple of bills that have gone through and we've passed them, Bill sixty-one, CD-one, um prohibiting the performance of wheelies on public roadways and Bill One. This is twenty-twenty-five bill authorizing outdoor dining services in certain public places. I know that doesn't directly connect to our district, but just something for us to be aware of. This is something started, I think, during COVID and they made it um we turned into ordinance. There are three resolutions. Uh, I just wanna quickly highlight. Resolution twenty-five forty-two urging the city administration to provide unlawful gambling room prevention and reporting programs. That's something that came from a task force that was created. Resolution twenty-five dash forty-eight, CD-one urging the city administration to create an Oahu Tourism Strategic Plan as well as twenty-five dash fifty-six, CD-one establishing a permitted interaction group to discuss and explore the potential use of tax increment financing. The council is also considering um amendments to lower the increased sewer fees and charges prop- proposed by the administration's Bill sixty. That is had just passed a second reading. We just had our full council hearing. I believe it was last week. It was on April sixteen. Sorry, the days just alternate to one. So April sixteen was our last council hearing. And that's that that measure passed second reading and we will having, we'll be having our committee hearings next week and the next full council will be on May fourteenth. Um, let me see what else I have here. Amendments to the Mayor's proposed operating and capital improvement budget project budgets are due at the end of this month. We actually have, I believe it was a May, a special CD-two budget meeting set for May twelfth. And we have June sixteenth as our deadline for the council. By charter, we have to adopt a budget by that day on June sixteenth. Going back to my newsletter, there was on page seven of the newsletter, just to note, you can see that around seventeen percent of the mayor's three-point-nine-three billion-dollar fiscal year budget for twenty-twenty-six for the operating budget is allocated to fund the police and fire departments and the city's emergency services divisions. And this year's capital improvement project additions specifically for our district area in Pearl City, we are requesting fifty thousand dollars for animal crossing signs, related equipment for sustainable and resilient animal crossing signs to warn motorists of potential wildlife hazards in areas prone to animal encounters. We are also requesting, my office and I are requesting one hundred one thousand dollars for Pacific Palisades emergency access roads. This provision of funds to acquire land, plan and design our secondary emergency access roadway for Palisades residents. No monies for this project shall be expended or encumbered unless matching funds are provided for this project by the State of Hawaii. And number three, we are requesting one point uh one million ninety-three thousand dollars for Bus Stop eighty access. Plan, design and construct for bus stop improvements at various locations, including covered and uncovering uncovered bus stops in Pearl City. And then also I did mention that on May twelfth, we have a special CD-two budget meeting for the council. Some concerns that the office received, my office received, I believe, in last month's neighborhood board meeting, there was a pedestrian safety concern at the intersection of Acacia Road and Koala Street. DTS reviewed traffic collision history and records did not find any trends related to pedestrian safety within the last three years. However, they they will be installing a turning vehicle stop for pedestrian sign on the northwest side of Koala Street and the southeastern median for vehicles turning left from Acacia Road. And I believe again, that was from a previous board meeting. So I know my team has been here um taking a lot of your questions and I'm thankful for you in receiving them when I'm not able to be here in person. And I wanna thank Chair Verre again. I know that even when with your health issues, you still come and you you serve diligently. So I wanna thank you for your service and and all the members of the board. And at this time, I will take any questions that you have.
Right. Thank you very much for the updates, uh Board Members. Questions for our Councilmember?
Oh, my gosh, is it a record?
I think I think he burned out with a bottle.
Thank you, Director Albano. Oh, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Yes, so you so you heard, you heard our resolution tonight.
I did, I did, for the Blaisdell.
Yes, we definitely definitely need your help on that to make that happen.
I know last year after the Mayor's Town Hall, we looked into another area that is in the district and.
Yeah, the Wild District Park's not gonna work.
That was, yeah. So I'll I'll look into, thank you for bringing up uh um Blaisdell. We'll look into that and see what can be done. And thank you, uh Member Heidi, for indicating that that is currently listed as a park, but an on-leash park. Okay. We'll look into that. I know Chair Verre has had multiple um visions for this park, so we'll see what we can get done to meet the needs of the community.
Yeah, I think it's success for for not only Pearl City, but it'll be for I A and Waipahu too. They use it quite a bit too.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Okay, Charmaine, go ahead.
Um, I I'll send an email to follow up on this. Um, I think last year you added, um I think it was last year, added money for um a dog park in Pearl City. Um, and so I think Chair Verre was interested in finding out if any of that money has been expended since it's kind of bunched together. And I'll send an email um with the project number in case, yeah, you know, many projects. But could you or the Director um help us to get copies of the master plans for the parks in Pearl City? It can be, you know, like a PDF or so forth. And also, um, if one of you can figure out if the Blaisdell Park is in the special management area and whether that will impact um a dog park at all. Thank you. And thank you for all your list and your um update and reports and those projects. We appreciate the animal signs and all of those things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I will follow up. Thank you for asking about the budget for that park that we, last year it was, we had requested and we were looking at Waiala and that, as Chair Verre mentioned, did not go through. But we'll follow up to see where the monies went for that. And Vice Chair, I will follow up on the last two, the master plan for the parks in Pearl City and how it relates to Blaisdell, if it's an SME and and with your resolution under on on the deck. Thank you. Should we send it to, I guess we'll send it to Chair Verre and you, Vice Chair? Is that okay? Okay, we'll see what we can do.
Okay, and uh also was gonna ask you uh this issue that was brought up during Public Concerns about a halfway house. Uh, it's a very similar scenario of what we had before. And when Senator Alefante was a council member, he was instrumental in jumping in. We actually had a meeting with the neighborhood to try to find out where that where that medium was to to make it work. But a lot of pressure went on the uh the owner of the house that was not doing their due diligence and keeping your people and monitoring your conduct. This is one of those situations. There has to be somebody in charge on that property, a hundred percent. But we wanted to ask uh your help in helping us work this issue because I really think it's bigger than us and I think you need to be with this one.
Okay, thank you. I did get the email, the contact information from the gentleman who was your chief. And I know he had caught, he'd been in communication with Senator Alefante. So we'll follow up to see what the city's responsibility is as far as, I'm not sure, the permitting. But I think as Vice Chair Duran mentioned, this program probably falls under the Department of Health, which is the state um department. So we'll we'll definitely work together and see what we can do. Um, I'm guessing it was blurred out like you mentioned because of confidentiality issues. So we'll see what we can do. We wanna make sure that the members, the neighbors are are safe and they feel safe.
Well, this board has a very good track record over the last two decades because up in the Department of Health, up in the closed area, there's a, there's a small uh section up there for for sexual abuse for boys. And we had major problems. The community didn't want it. And we finally mediated that. And for the last ten years, we haven't had one complaint because they're doing their job up there managing it and there hasn't been anybody escaped from that area.
Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for all that you're doing. I appreciate that.
It's our lawmakers working together to work the problem instead of kicking a can down the road. And I know that Guy, Neighborhood Board's got an issue right now. They're trying to work. That's pretty big.
Correct.
But they need to take our lessons learned too. Because we, there's gotta, there's gotta find a compromise. Board Members, any questions for our Councilmember? Dan, go ahead.
Yes, um, I I really appreciate the, you know, parks and recreational areas. Um um, and the um, the Palisades uh park next to the um to um Palisades Elementary uh needs some uh masonry work on the the wall in the uh in the outfield. I've taken a little project to um dig up some of these uh invasive large grass so that the wall, you can now see the wall, some of the wall. But uh it needs some uh masonry uh repair and that's that's beyond my uh my skill level. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh Board Member Smith. So just to clarify, this is the Palisades Elementary, the park that's connected to the elementary at the school. It needs masonry work. Okay. Okay, thank you. I may don't have that.
You're talking to Mike, Dan.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and and I was, uh, visiting, um, uh, PC Rec, uh, today and, you know, the repair, the repair in the gym is coming along.
Yes, yes.
Uh, and, uh, look forward to that, uh, refurbishment being completed.
Thank you. We're looking forward to that, too. It's been a year, almost a year, but the roof is almost done and we're looking forward to, thank you for your patience.
Any other questions, board members? Council member, I got you in the lineup now at at the front and I think.
I appreciate you doing that, Chair.
The tech team and with with the director. I mean, this way we get through these issues quickly instead of waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Please give us a heads up on the GIA reviews that are coming up.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Hickman, thank you for waiting very patiently.
No problem. It's always good to go after those guys. Cannot be worse, right? Um, uh, right along the same veins of that gentleman who made the complaint, I'm going to work with Senator Alefante. So we're going to go state and county level. So I got all the information from the gentleman, the address, and I'll get it right to the Department of Health. So we'll we'll work at it different, different ways. Um, from last month, I mentioned the governor's initiative to do the quick hires in response to the current administration and a lot of federal workers out of jobs. So they had a gigantic, uh, fair. I just got some of the stats back. Uh, there was over three thousand applications received, um, about sixty-seven conditional offers and hires were made that day. So that was, that was pretty fast. Um, consider it a small success. I know a lot more has to be done, but, uh, question was brought up about what people can do to find jobs and that was the most recent thing. I know there's going to be more events, so as they come up, I'll make sure I share those. I got a question from, I think it was, uh, Vice Chair about, uh, DOE, DOE attending the Pearl City Neighborhood Board meetings. So I brought that up and I think they might be able to get somebody to attend quarterly, but I can take the questions between those off meetings. So I still didn't get confirmation on exactly which ones they're going to attend, but, um, I I can take the questions to them. Another one was tennis courts at Pearl City are in bad shape. Can they be repaired? And so these are the ones at Pearl City High School. DOE submitted a six hundred fifty thousand dollar budget request last year to resurface those, uh, but it didn't get funded. So they're going to try again. So that's kind of the status on the tennis courts. Somebody asked about the pool and if it could be like the one in Kohuku, uh, where it's a community pool. Um, and so they said building a pool on the school campus is a significant amount of funding and when you have to balance a pool versus classrooms, the pool will lose out every time. So something about working with, uh, the community is something that can be looked into. So if that is an option, then, um, you can bring that up as a as something that we can look into. But putting it on the Pearl City High School campus is probably a losing effort on that because just because of the priorities and the current budget. Um, but that's all I had in my report. Um, if I have any questions from the board or from the public, you can take those.
Okay, great updates. Thank you, Rodney.
Um, yeah, seconds. Um, in light of what's going on, uh, around, uh, the states today, um, I have a question for, it's probably DOE. Are we protecting our children from the federal agencies coming onto the campuses?
Oh, I have to look into that. Okay, I can take that.
But, you know, it, uh, I kind of, you know, say how much of a traumatic experience it would be for the kids. So, you know, something like that, if the governor could look into that. Um, I know they're, they, they want to go after the weak ones and whatnot, but, you know, be, just protect the kids. That's the main thing.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hey, anybody, uh, virtual for the board? See none? Dan?
That's right. The idea of, uh, somebody coming quarterly, they could, you know, would, would, would be good. Um, maybe we can help them, they can help us. Uh, I am, I am concerned that nobody on on our board lives, um, Makai of, uh, Cam Highway, I think. There's a substantial population down there that, um, you know, probably should be represented in our, in our, uh, neighborhood board. You know, encourage civic in, 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 in involvement, engagement. Thank you.
Okay, I'll stress the DOE attendance.
And I'll go ahead and put on the agenda for quarterly so that way they could see they got a, they got a slot to try to meet.
And it's okay if they attend virtually, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, no, we don't should issue with that. And it's and you also with you, if you want to attend virtual.
Oh, no, this is fun.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Charmaine? Go ahead.
Um, just to follow up on Boards Member Smith and your report, in the last year, we have talked about school-related issues, including traffic, sixteen different times. So having somebody rotate, you know, and doesn't necessarily have to be a principle for me, it can be, you know, region, district, um, might be useful so that we can work more closely together.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Hey, any other questions? Hey, see none? Thank you, Mr. Hickman.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, moving on, Casey Abbe, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Maybe give us a quick update as we're moving along.
Sure.
And nothing on Pacific Palisades. That was a half hour.
Good evening, Chairman Ray, members of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board. Uh, Casey, I refer from the State DOT Highways Division. At last month's meeting, I mentioned we would be replacing the existing no U-turn signs at the Hiko Power Plant with a sign like the one we installed at the Halemo Hala entrance. Glad to report the sign is installed. During my field inspection last week, our maintenance crew have been slowly painting over and removing the graffiti. They managed to paint over a huge graffiti along Kuleaana Road, but the graffiti artists are still out there, so I can, will continue to work with our maintenance crew. During my field investigation last week, I noticed a Monopole marker sign along the Franklin Highway eastbound needs to be replaced and a gate along where, uh, of a road going towards the neighborhood community college needs to be secured. I'll work on, uh, with our maintenance crew to adjust these concerns. Besides following up with our maintenance crew on weed whacking along the proceeds of off-ramp, specifically as you approach the Ho'omalu Street, I want to thank Board Member Inori about trees along Mora'ano Road and coming highway that is slowly shooting onto the roadway. So I'll work with our maintenance crew on trimming the trees before a branch falls and cause an accident. Our maintenance crew finally repaired the damaged beam fences at four areas along Kamia Highway near Blaisdell Park, uh, just past the Hiko Power Plant, near Po'ouponi Street and near the L A gas station's Wiki Car Wash. And finally, after many months of, uh, following up with our maintenance crew, they finally replaced the damaged and missing flexible D main posts along Mora'ano Road heading towards the H one on ramp westbound. This concludes my report. I can take any questions this time.
Yeah, thank you, Casey. Definitely noticed the difference there with, uh, with the, with the, the maintenance issues that were done. Um, one thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, uh, the coconut rhinoceros beetle has definitely attacked the state, uh, trees along the H one on Ka'ahamano Street. Uh, if you look on the, uh, on the west, westbound side as you're going northbound on Ka'ahamano, you look off to the left, you'll see all the palms just hanging and one of the trees is already dead. And now that they're, they're eating up those palm trees, they're jumping the fence into my housing area and we've caught two beetles already. So we've got thirty-three monkey pot trees and we've got at least twenty-four, uh, manila palms. So I ask if you can come in and treat, treat those trees on both sides of Ka'ahamano.
Okay, I'll follow up on that.
Okay. Was any questions for Casey Whip?
Um, quick question about the H one freeway. Is that, do I direct that to you or is that?
Yes, it's the state highways.
Okay, so from the on-ramp at Pearl City going eastbound, we have a really long merge lane there. There is no signage toward the end of that merge lane telling people that it's about to disappear, right as it goes under, I believe it's the Ka'ahumanu overpass.
Yes.
And I've had, um, a couple of people mention that to me. It appears as though that lane is going to continue on and then it just vanishes with no warning. Is it possible to get some kind of a merge sign in there or something to indicate that it's ending?
Sure, I'll work with our traffic brands to see what appropriate sign can be installed.
Hey, thank you. Any other questions? Hey, Board Members, any questions virtual? See none, community? None? Okay, Casey, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, moving on to our state legislature, Senator Glenn Wakai. Anybody represent his office? Hey, we do have Senator Brendan Alefante waiting very patiently. Thank you, sir.
Oh, you'll see. Uh, great, great evening, Chairman Ray, Vice Chair Duran, members of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board and members of the community. I'm Brandon Alefante from the State Senate. Uh, first, I'd like to start off on thank you to Steve for being here tonight. I was able to have a conversation with him about his concern of that particular home, uh, which is on Ho'onipoh Street. So after looking it up, um, that's actually in Senator Aquino and Rep Takayama's district. So I have forwarded that concern to them and, uh, we'll work together to see what we can do along with Mr. Hickman from the governor's office. Uh, you do have my written report, my highlights of the newsletter. Uh, on the front part of the report, I just want to highlight, uh, two things in particular related to Pearl City is, um, Palisades, uh, celebrated their anniversary, which is a big anniversary of the school. Um, so details are about that. And also Principal Sui was also named as a, um, elementary middle school finalist. Um, so he'll go on to the national level, uh, to hopefully win the national award for that effort. So really want to thank Principal Sui and all the people at Palisades Elementary for what they have done. And for those who live in Palisades, and I know that you've been following this issue closely, um, yesterday, the House Finance and Ways and Means Committee, uh, did agree to a million dollars in the state budget for an emergency access, um, type of pathway, way that would go in and out of Palisades. So, uh, it still has to go through a final vote on the floor for both chambers, uh, in order to pass, but that's good news. Um, so I want to thank Rep Takayama and his staff in working with our office to get that appropriation. Also on my report is Charger Palooza celebrated their fifth annual, um, event, which is a highlight and showcase of what the students are doing at Pearl City High School. And then I also passed out, um, a few highlights and Faith Kontua from my staff. She's online, she'll send this link. Um, it's just kind of a more overarching view of the state budget. Uh, one in particular is the operating budget in terms of highlights and then CIP, um, highlights that goes over the different departments and what was appropriated and agreed to and voted on by the conference committee last night. Um, so we are in the final weeks of session. Session ends on May second, so we're in a conference time right now where we have some deadlines coming up at the end of this week for fiscal and non-fiscal bills. And with that, finally, I just want to take this moment to thank Casey Abbe for his follow-ups with H doc concerns and community concerns on a lot of things, uh, Pearl City. And finally, lastly, I want to just give a shout out to one of my legislative staffers, Faith Kontua. This will be her last meeting that she'll be here. She's on virtually, um, at the end of session. She's our session staff. Uh, she's responsible for doing social media, uh, the reports that you see. So I just really want to give her a shout out. Um, she'll be pursuing, uh, other things, um, at the end of session. So if we could just give her a round of applause for all her hard work. Thank you so much, Faith. We really appreciate you. Uh, with that, Chair, that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, great updates, Senator. And the first thing I want to say is, uh, last night, uh, I was in a neighborhood commission meeting and I got a text from Senator Wakai, uh, indicating that he said that the legislature approved a GIA grant for Friends for Sunset Memorial Cemetery nonprofit. That is a huge jumpstart for the nonprofit to be able to revitalize our cemetery that's been a big problem for the last decade. So again, my thanks to all the legislative team for your support in getting that through.
No, and thank you, Chair, for your hard work and the board. And if I may, just on a point of personal privilege, just one thing for Pearl City to know, I was having a conversation with Senator Aquino today. Uh, we're probably one of the very few communities, uh, for the senators where all of us who represent this board sits on the Ways and Means Committee from Senator Kidani, Senator Delacruz, Senator Aquino, Senator Wakai and myself. So, um, we're pleased to see, you know, the results and the hard work from the board and collaborating with us.
Thank you very much. Board Members, any questions for our Senator? Go ahead.
Um, let me see, it says under. Transportation DOT, um, earmark ten million nine for aircraft rescue firefighting operations. What is that?
Uh, I can provide you more information on the breakdown of that. You're looking at the operating highlights?
Yeah, DOT. On the last page on the top.
On the first, the first bullet point?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll, I'll go follow up and get back to you.
Yeah, because I would hope that in the future that we would, um, step up to the plate and get some aircraft that can actually, uh, you know, fight fires rather, uh, better than when we use it with the helicopters. Um, if we would ever have a, you know, a major one, I think those would, uh, come in handy.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, uh, virtually? See none? Senator, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, Senator Aquino, I, I got his, uh, report. I forwarded to all the board members. Okay, Representative Takayama sent me a text. He was still in meetings when our board meeting started. Uh, also Representative Chun is also in meetings. He had, somebody from Chun's office. Okay, Representative Chun's office, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, Representative Chun is, um, in meetings, um, but he did want me to, um, uh, participate at least virtually. Um, he said there was a question, um, last month regarding, um, uh, whether or not, um, the Department of, um, Law Enforcement was receiving federal funding for, uh, help with fireworks enforcement. I was able to speak with, um, Department of Law Enforcement and at this time, they are not getting any federal funding to help with, um, fireworks enforcement. That, um, that's all I have to report, but I can bring back questions.
Any questions, John? Hey, see none? Hey, moving on to, uh, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to Representative Trish LaChica. Welcome.
Aloha, Chairman Ray, members of the board. I hope you're all doing well. I'm Erin, also known as Kez Enriquez. I'm a Pearl City grad and I'm here on behalf of Representative LaChica, who sends her apologies for not being able to attend in person today. Her newsletter is available on the Pearl City Neighborhood Board Google Drive as well as her website, reptrishla chica dot com. I will keep it very short tonight, but I want to give a quick update on a few bills we still have moving through the legislative process. First being HB eight six two, which allows schools to use motor coaches, small buses and vans to transport students as long as they meet certain safety and regulatory requirements. HB twelve thirty-one bans facial recognition in red light cameras, raises better, raises vehicle weight taxes to fund safer school routes and allows speed cameras near schools. It also lets officials recommend twenty-five high-risk intersections and school zones for camera enforcement. HB three two nine, which enables more pre-K and childcare facilities to be built and allocates funding are all still alive. HB four three five, which would provide comprehensive regulation for e-bikes, got folded into another bill, HB nine five eight, which sets new rules where electric bikes and similar vehicles. Kids under fifteen cannot ride the fastest e-bikes and helmets are now required for anyone under eighteen. It allows e-bikes on sidewalks under certain conditions, but bans mopeds and electric motorcycles. It allows e-bikes on sidewalks under certain conditions, but bans mopeds and electric motorcycles from bike paths. It also says no one under 18 can ride electric motorcycles or motor-driven cycles. This bill is now moving into conference. Lastly, I want to mention that our office will be hosting a talk story on May 1st and the topic will be community safety and transportation. The talk will be held at the Hawaii Okinawan Center Ballroom NYPD at 5:30 PM. We would love for any of you to join us. Mahalo for your time and please let me know if you have any questions. I did see one in the chat. I graduated Pearl City in 2019.
Okay, great. Right. All right, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for the updates. Okay, moving on to Congressman Ed Case, Anestra Garcia. We don't see him online. Okay, for Joint Base Pearl Harbor. Welcome, Chris. Chris Tanahara, and thank you for coordinating those boat trips.
Of course. Good evening, everyone. Aloha, Chair Verre and board members. Chris Tanahara, Deputy Public Affairs Officer at Navy Region Hawaii. Chair, yes, you mentioned the monthly ship tours. So we were so happy we could host members of the board. That was on April 5th and we toured the USS Carl Levin. So we thought that was a successful event. Hopefully everyone enjoyed themselves. And for future reference, we are doing these pretty regularly. So if you missed the April 5th tour and want to jump on another tour, please reach out to me. All of the tours are on Saturdays beginning at about nine o'clock. And it's a short tour, about an hour and a half, and you'll get a chance to take a look at some of the ships that are in port. So we've got dates available for May 3rd, May 10th and the 17th. Secondly, we do a community white boat tours. So we were pleased to see Heidi on this afternoon's tour. It was a special one for today in recognition of Earth Day. So we talked not only about the history of Pearl Harbor, but also about some of our stewardship projects. So that was a very well-attended tour. And again, we do these periodically and Chair Verre will let you know when the next one is scheduled. I'll just touch briefly on Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill. Let's see, cleaning began on Tank 3 in March and ventilation started on Tank 4. Also, there will be a webinar on the 29th at 5:00 PM focusing on the reactivation of the Navy Aea Halava Shaft. And the rest of the updates are in the report that I sent over this afternoon. And I did want to address one question that Rodney raised at the last board meeting. And this was about the overgrowth along Halava Stream. We did have our NAVFAC team take a look at the area. And I did send along two photos of two areas where there was significant overgrowth. One was along Pu'u Makani Street heading to Camp Smith in Halava Heights Aea above Aloha Stadium. And the second was near Poco Road and Webbling Elementary School. And let's see, so according to NAVFAC, the Navy does not own the land, but utilizes it and therefore is responsible for maintaining it. So NAVFAC is working with its contractors to address the issue and to implement a periodic maintenance plan. So Rodney, I'm not sure if that's near where your mother, your mother's house is, but there is a plan to address the overgrowth.
Yeah, I think the part of the Halava Stream that I'm getting from is actually from Salt Lake Boulevard down by the stadium on the backside of the Halava Estates. And it goes all the way to Nimitz or Cam Highway. So that's the stretch of it. And as I was passing there this past weekend, right before the McDonald's, I looked right down and darn if there wasn't a tree growing in the middle of the stream. So, um, yeah, there is a lot of overgrowth, but the, the, the the funny thing about it is, is that the residents who live on that stream, their houses are on the backside of the stream, actually pay flood insurance. So that one is kind of quirky because, you know, how can you have flood insurance when there's no stream? So at one time back in the 70s when I was growing up over there, there was a stream. Believe it or not, we used to swim inside there. But now with all the overgrowth and the mangroves, it's just crawling across the stream. So, yeah, if you guys are going to do something, that'd be great.
Okay, I'm not sure about that particular area. So again, that's Salt Lake Boulevard on the backside of Halava Estates?
Right. And the stream goes all the way to Cam Highway. But it actually goes all the way out to the Makalapa Gate.
Okay.
Where the Arizona Tours are, that's the stream.
Okay. So tours, okay, I'll take this back to NAVFAC. And I'll ask if they can look into that area to find out. Yeah, if that is an area that the Navy can address. So I'll report back.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. And then Larry, I don't know if you want to ask me questions about Pearl Harbor Access, but I'm prepared to answer.
As far as, what was that again? Pearl Harbor Access?
Uh, yes, access to Pearl Harbor for recreational use.
I would, I would rather take those off.
Okay.
I'm trying to, I'm, the way I'm going through this thing right now, I'm trying to vet it through the proper channels before we go to the Navy to make sure. And, and I'll give you a heads up because when we do meet with the Navy, it'll definitely have the legislature representative, city council and parks. Because I could see potential for a possible memorandum of agreement. This, this would be huge, win-win, not only for the Navy, but also for the communities. If we could pull that off, especially what we're asking for, for, for the, the temporary, and I use the word temporary because it's a, it would be a privilege for any use of any Navy property for any recreational activities. But the thing is, though, this is going to benefit Navy, the Navy families as well. So, but thank you for bringing it up and, and there'll be a time here, we'll be with you, get you educated so you can bring this to senior staff. I'll have talking points for you in a paper so that you could brief them ahead of time. So there's no surprises.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Chris, thank you so much. And, and I know you're losing your, your soldiers there. You lost, you lost Victor. And I just heard today that Duna is going to be leaving too. And we hope to see Duna next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. All right, board members, any other questions for Chris? Okay, seeing none. See you next meeting. And you can go virtual, it's easy.
Okay, thanks so much.
Okay, uh, okay. Chancellor Carlos Ben Loza, Chancellor, what do you got for us today?
Well, aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee and members of the community. Really brief updates. As you probably all are aware and hearing from the media, we're still managing quite a bit on the executive orders from the federal government and the impacts that we're having with some of our grants and employees. Just for the sake of Leeward Community College, we're managing quite all right so far. No major concerns. But we're looking at potential impact long-term as well as the greater impact for the university system. I wanted to share that our commencement ceremony is scheduled for Friday, May 16th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM. That's important to share because as you're probably aware, we do generate quite a bit of traffic. Especially at the end of the ceremony, we're encouraging folks to take rail. We've coordinated with them. They will remain open almost two hours after our commencement ceremony is done. I did that last year and it helped considerably. If any of you would like to join us, just let me know. We have a spot for you. This year, our Culinary Arts Program has opted to take a pause on our annual gala event, Luulu. In, in exchange for that, we are hosting a showcase, Stirring Up Memories, which is going to be held on May 10th at 6:00 PM. If anyone's interested on tickets, 808-455-0300. Or just reach out to me directly and I'll give you more information on that. Pretty memorable experiences from culinary, which is tied to my next update. Last week, I accompanied one of our faculty members to Nashville, Tennessee, where the American Association for Community Colleges held its annual conference. AACC is the largest community college organization and it hosts well over 1,000 community colleges. Our Culinary Arts Coordinator, Matt Igami, won the AACC Dale Parnell Distinguished Faculty Award. I appreciate that recognition. It's, it's a really big one for an organization as large as AACC. And this is the third consecutive year that a faculty member of ours wins that award. So that's for the college right in your backyard. The last bit that I'll share is that we have been announcing and publicizing a summer tuition reduction for the community colleges. And we're finding a surge of registrations for the summer, but encouraging for the word to be spread and for students to take the opportunity of taking these summer classes. We know that that summer melt is where we lose quite a bit of students. High school graduates that may take their first summer job may not want to come to college immediately after. And so that summer tuition break is, is really important. And with that, I'll stop with my announcements given the time, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hey Chancellor, thank you very much. And I'll canvass the board for May 16th commencement ceremony to see if anybody wants to go, as well as May 10th. Anybody wants to purchase tickets to go to the culinary event? So board members, please reach out to me and, and I'll help coordinate that. Board members, any questions for Chancellor? Rodney, go ahead.
Hi Carlos, always good to see you. Always good to see what's happening down at the LCC. Um, same question as that. Are we looking out for the welfare of the students at LCC? If any such of the federal agencies will come around looking for them or looking for any, you know, foreign students? So same thing I'll ask him. As the president up at UH, has anyone lost their visas or, you know, are we looking out for them?
So, so I'll tell you that I keep a very close pulse on that situation, both on the student and employee side. We check daily for visa revocation statuses. As of right now, there have been no impacts to Leeward employee or students. Relative to that, we have resources that are available. I can't say that they are unlimited resources, but we do want to support students and employees that may be caught up in this situation. Like I said, from the very beginning, I've asked my folks to check daily and to keep me posted should any of these statuses change so that we could provide immediate resources to impacted individuals.
Appreciate it, boss.
Anytime.
Any other board member question? Virtually, seeing none, community, nothing? Charmaine, go ahead. All right, we're good. All right, Chancellor, thank you so much. And I'll be in touch with you on those events that are coming up.
All right, aloha.
Okay, and moving on to Vicki Bowie. Vicki, how are you today? I understand the Board of Education had representatives in the Pearl City Library at 5:30 today that we got extremely short notice on and could not attend.
Oh, I didn't hear about that, but, um, oh, sorry. Uh, well, good evening, everyone, first of all. And I just wanted to mention a few things. First off is that the library will be closed on May 25 and May 26, which is Sunday and Monday in observance of Memorial Day. In May, we'll be taking a hiatus with Storytime. Instead, on May 1st at 10:30, we're going to have a magic show for the kids. And for the other weeks and Thursdays, we are going to be doing our digital library, sorry, digital literacy classes every Thursday morning at 10:00 AM. So they're going to do computer basics, internet basics, email and online safety. Then they added on two new classes on Friday at 11:00 AM. One about advanced computer basics and one for smartphone basics. That's on May 9 and May 16. You can sign up online or you can contact the library to sign up for these classes. And our library has a lot of other programs in May. So if you want to, you could check out our website, www.liberyservi.org to find out more about our programs and services. Or you can contest, contact us at the library at 808-453-6566. Also, I just wanted to end with a comment about the IMLS. So I'm not sure if you guys know what's going on as that stands for the Institute for Museum and Library Services. This is a federal program that has helped fund a lot of libraries. And yes, that, that is a program that is affected by this administration's cuts. For us and in Hawaii, this affects our online services. So things like our ebook service, which is very popular, may be affected by this cut. I'm not sure yet. We're going to wait for more information from our state librarian as she addresses this issue. And that is my report.
Vicki, thank you very much for all those updates. Board members, any questions for Vicki? Seeing none, virtual. Vicki, thank you so much for the updates.
Thank you.
Okay, Arlen, what do you got to report? We had a couple of breaks.
Aloha, good evening, Chair, board members and Pearl City community. Last month, there was one water main break in Pearl City. It was an eight-inch main break that occurred March 24 near 2368 Animi Place. And there was also one water main break in February. It was again, eight-inch main break near 1434 Nanakai Street. As Director Urbano mentioned earlier, the city and county of Honolulu launched HNL Alert, replacing hnl.info notification system for weather, severe weather, emergencies and other situations affecting city services. You can sign up for our custom alerts on hnlalert.gov or urgent alerts only by texting hnlalert to 888777. If you'd like more information, you can go to honolulu.gov/DEM for a Department of Emergency Management for more information. And that's the end of my report. Any questions?
Hey, Arlen, thank you very much. Board members, any questions for Board of Water? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Arlen.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Tony, community associations, any updates for us?
Yeah, there'll be a What the Truck this coming Friday, April 25th, from Florida 8 at the Pearl City High School. If you're not doing anything, please go and check it out. And on May 17th, is Pearl City High School graduation at the Hawaii Convention Center at 6:00 PM. Other than that, that's it.
Tony, thank you for those updates and with that, What the Truck, there's also a craft fair to go with that, correct?
Yeah, that's, sorry, yeah, you're correct.
Okay, good. All right, Tony, anything else? Seeing none. Last item on the agenda. Board members, you all received copies of the minutes? Do we have a question? Guy, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, Chair Verre, just FYI, the Rab had our third meeting the other week. And we're in the midst of redoing the advisory board's charter. So when that's completed, then I'll be sharing it out with the board members.
Okay, great. Guy, thanks for taking your time to attend the Navy's Restoration Advisory Board Meeting. It's very important with the cleanups that they're doing around the islands. Okay, moving on to, to our regular board meeting minutes. Everybody got a chance to read those for last meeting? Can I get a motion to approve?
Second. A second.
Second.
And no changes? And if there are no objections, we'll consider them approved. Okay, all right, moving on. Last item. This is this particular week, this month, the city counts, the city and county, the mayor have been supporting the Hawaii Food Bank. city council, the city and county, the mayor have been supporting the Hawaii Food Bank, going out everywhere asking all organizations to please contribute food for the hungry. So if you get a chance, stop by the food bank, drop off your canned goods, help them out. Other than that, any other announcements anybody wants to make? Okay, seeing none. The Pearl City Neighborhood Board 21, next board meeting will be held hybrid, virtual, in-person, facilitated on WebEx, virtually and facilitated at Momi Lani Community Center on Tuesday, May 27, 2025. The Pearl City Neighborhood Board 21 meetings are broadcast on Focus, Channel 49 and the second Saturday, 6:00 PM and the first and third Friday, 1:00 PM. Next month's meeting will be the, will be our last meeting for the term since we're going to be in recess for June and we'll be saying aloha to Brandon and Junior and Cooney. So again, thank you guys and we're going to recognize you next meeting. All right, other than that, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.